I'll push my button here. Congratulations, Katie. I'm very proud of you and glad to have you on board. We went through a good, extensive, exhaustive search, and I'm going to let Lindsay tell you all about that, but just want to say thank you and congratulations to you.
Lindsay, I'm the economic development director and will make some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Katie Lynn, our new Main Street manager. After a highly competitive selection process, Katie emerged as a top candidate, and for good reason. She's been serving as our interim Main Street manager since December, and she has led with a calm confidence, exceptional organization, and professionalism. She's a self-starter and immediately began overseeing key projects and engaging with her downtown businesses. With a strong background in nonprofit management, stakeholder engagement, fundraising, and event planning, she brings the skills and vision needed to drive the downtown revitalization forward. And I have no doubt, under Katie's leadership, our downtown development efforts will continue to gain momentum, so please join me in welcoming her in this new role.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and share a few updates, if I may, about downtown Albemarle. Last week, I attended the state Main Street Conference in Mooresville. I met a lot of wonderful people, gained valuable connections, and attended wonderful sessions, including some of which things that I can implement right away even this week so far. It's been great. I'm jumping right in with our first event being Saturday at the Outdoorsman's Bonanza at the Farm Bureau Livestock Arena, so I hope you'll join us there. Another event change is, based on community feedback, we have moved the Stanley County Winter Wine Fest to a warmer season. It has been rebranded as the Summertime Sip Festival, and it will debut on May 31st, which is the weekend after Memorial Day. We'll hold it at Courthouse Plaza and the adjacent lots for a great opportunity to showcase downtown to our community members and visitors alike. Beyond events, I'm focused on downtown revitalization through economic development, beautification projects, and engaging with existing businesses in our downtown. And we're exploring new ways to attract businesses, activate underutilized spaces, and enhance the downtown experience. Another thing I'm committed to is developing the Board of Albemarle Downtown and recruiting volunteers to help us accomplish our mission. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'm excited to continue serving the city.
Katie, we welcome you to our home here, and we look forward to what you're going to bring to our downtown.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
I'm expecting great things.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the March 3rd, 2025 regular session and March 4th, 2025 special work session.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move, I do not have any public comments, no one signed up. Move to administrative reports or in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. 9A, consider road closure for the swinging in the streets. That is May the 17th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. 9B is consider road closures for steel runs car show. That is Saturday, May 10th, 2025, and the streets will actually be closed from 12:00 noon to 9:00 p.m. 9C, consideration of the professional services proposal, fire station location analysis. That is a proposal that is a group that is involved with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and for that reason, we received a DIS account. I think it's 19, 750 is the total price. 9D, ordinance 2514 is a budget amendment to implement the SAFER grant and some drug seizure funds to purchase drones for the police department. And 9E is a 2024 audit contract and engagement letter. That is 99, 580 this year. This is the third and final year, unless council chooses to extend that contract by two more years. You have that opportunity, and at some point, I'm sure finance will be coming to us quickly to ask us how we want to move forward with that in the next year.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the consent agenda, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clark, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things for you. Just a reminder that we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. at the EE Waddell Building. We'll be reviewing final updates to our strategic plan. Our staffing study will be presented, the results of that, and then also a review of our finances with First Try On. So that's tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. Also, Mayor, at your discretion, I would like to schedule a meeting for April 21st, if possible, for a work session to discuss a possible transition to public housing authority. Someone with HUD can be available to meet with council remotely, and we would suggest a meeting time of 5:00 p.m. Staff would make a brief presentation to City Council at that meeting as well, but that would be the April 21st, just prior to your regular meeting.
5:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am.
Give that to me again. I'll caught part of that.
So this would be for a discussion that may lead to possible transition to a public housing authority.
And on whose, now I am. And is this something that they have asked for? Where's, how did this initiate?
Council, we have discussed this previously, and we were directed staff to bring us back details.
Okay. I can't remember, I didn't remember that we had directed staff to do that.
Probably last October or November.
Okay. Months ago.
Yes, ma'am. It's been a while.
And who is it that's going to be with us?
Darren has contacted HUD, and they have an official that would join us.
Via?
And answer any questions that you might have via remote.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. But if it's a pleasure of the council mayor, we would schedule that.
Council, I'd entertain a motion that we set that meeting. Second motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, Council, the last thing I have for you is, I know the mayor had asked that I make an announcement tonight. He asked this at our last meeting, just to announce the Household Hazardous Waste and Electronics Recycling Day, Saturday, April 5th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the County Agro Civic Center in the rear parking lot. They will not accept small business, excuse me, small appliances. No businesses allowed, and there is a phone number that's listed for any details with county. It's, and we have that number that we can distribute to citizens if there's an interest. But just a reminder of that, Saturday, April 5th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Mayor and Council, that concludes my comments. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Council, anybody else have anything to come before council?
I do, and I sent it out to everyone late Thursday night. Oops, I didn't believe. I got a call from a resident behind CNA, behind where the quarry is, asking or talking about the same types of things Dexter, as you have talked about over off of 24/27, about any of the blasting. And I forwarded this, I'm sure, anyway, I forwarded it, and I just, my question was, is that it gets, we need something in some format that the community and that our residents can read, I don't know if it's something that David does or something, to explain to folks what the rules are and how these folks can do the blasting, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe at one point back in NJR, back at one point, there was a buffer out there, and I think the buffer is no longer there. I am only the messenger, but supposedly the same kinds of comments, Dexter, that you were hearing that felt like foundations were shaking whenever the blasting was going on 24/27, some folks in that development behind CNA gave that to me at the end of last week. I did, we all got the email today from Todd answering some questions that I had posed, and he gave me what Robert had said about the fire code. I guess I want something that is succinct, that says this is allowable, and though the city council does not have any control of it, or over it, or we do, I think that that's what we need to be able to tell these folks, because these folks, I mean, it's just going to get, we're going to have continuing to have more and more of it. One of the comments by this reporter on Thursday was that back in the fall, November, December, it was going on to the point that starting very early in the morning and going very late in the evening. Again, I am only the messenger, but we need to be able to answer these citizens when they call and ask these things.
Mr. Clark? Yes, ma'am. We'll be happy to prepare something for you. I know Chief Kendall's here, and Mr. Will Hoyt is here as well. If you would like to ask some specific questions, then we can get into that tonight as well.
Now, I just, I forwarded the text to you, and I think I forwarded it to everybody the other night, just because it was of a concern to me. And I'm trying to find it right now. You know, basically, you know, this person said, NJR or JTR, we think, has been blasting near our neighborhood. The past blast is about two weeks, has shaken the whole house. I'm concerned about foundations. Back in December, one of the companies would dump that sounded like boulders into truck beds and keep us up all night, starting at 9:30 until hours in the morning. So just know, again, I am the messenger. It happened lately, but for some reason, it makes retiring weeks. It hasn't been that bad, but they have taken down the trees, and I've not been out there to check. So apparently, it's been going on, but when there was a buffer, it was not so bad.
It is completely almost void. But anyway, it's almost devoid of trees as you go down, and the radio does make announcements prior to any blasting, and when I've heard, they give times that the blasting is to take end and to begin and end. But, you know, it's, it's pretty well clear cut out there.
And if the radio's doing it, then maybe we need to, we need to do something on our social media as well. I don't know. I just know that this is.
Well, we may, through social media, David, have a broader impact to our citizens. Leave your off, David.
See if that works.
There we go.
Those blasting activities have been announced on our social media pages and on the city's website for the last two occasions, and I believe that's probably where you're hearing it, from the radios, or actually getting that information from us. So we'll communicate, we've communicated it through the fire department's page and also through the city's pages as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll also add, after that first incident at the New Hampton Inn, after the first blasting incident, the fire department and the city both got involved, because initially, the builders, they had hired like a third party to supposedly inform the neighbors, which wasn't too successful, but then the local city staff, fire department, fire marshal got involved and went door to door within such a distance from the blasting site, and no further problems, as well as the communication that was on the city web Facebook page.
So what we can do is, we'll put together a, like a packet that you can have that states the fire code and what our part in the blasting is and what the city's part in the blasting is, so you can have a document, and if you do have somebody to call, then you will be able to let them know. So I'll, me and fire marshal will put that together this week and get it to the manager.
Thank you.
I'd add, I believe it's our role and our duty to notify anybody within 500 feet of a blast.
Yes, and where this blast site was, it was well over 1,500 to 2,000. It may have been further than that on this one. Yeah. But we do, if there is a problem, if there is a blast really close to houses, we have a letter that we take and we deliver door to door, if it requires that, so.
I think that's a good thing, given that this has really been neighborhood-specific with regard to the blasting. So anything that we can, I don't think we can over-publicize it.
Yeah, well, when I was speaking with the fire marshal earlier today, you know, NJR done a ton of blasts on the road that goes into the business park, the new business park. So they were blasting in there once a week for months, so. But the only people that actually called him on that one was the nursing home, because when it got down toward the end, it's in their backyard, but it still was quite a few thousand feet away, but they could still hear it. They weren't feeling it, they were hearing it, so.
Thank you.
Okay? We'll put that together for you.
Thank you. Anything else come before council?
And I, just the last thing is, is that there was some, the issue at public housing about the contractor, where are we on that? Because I knew we were supposed to be going out for bid and offering that, and then it was continued. And the other issue there was, at some point, there was developing a committee for complaints or resident disputes and those kinds of things. I know that that was something that we were, they or public council was working on. Have we gotten that done?
Right. I will ask Renate to address that question, as she's coming forward to answer that one. We have been working with our consultant, Stogner, and they have, their role is to inspect all of the units that are still in disrepair, that require upfitting and renovation, because we want to make sure that we capture all of the technical and the, all of the construction that needs to be summarized in a bid document that we will release. Our hope, well, our belief was that we were going to be able to get that document out next week. There's been some delays from the consultant, which tells us that it's going to be April before we can get the document out.
Is this, just a follow-up, is this not the contract about finding another group of people?
Yes. For another contract.
Right.
Not the consultant, but the contract.
Right. Another contract. And I guess I keep remembering that that was something that was supposed to have been, tried to be done four, six, eight weeks ago.
Yeah. And we've been working with him for that length of time.
Gotcha.
Hey. Okay. How are you? Good afternoon. As the city manager stated, that we have met with Stogner, as we did a Teams Call last week. The delay is, you know, they have other things on their schedule, but April the 1st, they will have someone to come out to do the field assessment, to help to start to put the bid package together, so that it can go out for bid. So that is a process, but we are working diligently with Wayne Stogner on making sure that we have everything out, and the bid out by the end of May. April 1st, they should have the field assessment completed. It's 20 units that we've submitted to them to do the field assessment, which is going to provide the full scope of work of all units, because we have different unit types. All units are not the same. So they're going to have to actually go into each unit and do an assessment, the scope of work to lay out what's going to be needed for those units. So we are working diligently with Stogner on that.
Can you give us a rough update on the current contractor, where he stands?
His final, his contract was amended. His last day should be May the 4th.
And how many units has he turned?
We're still sitting at the 21, and he has 10 that he's working on between now and the end of his contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess the follow-up to that is, do we have a committee yet, so that if folks want to dispute their rent and that kind of thing, that was something I think that was talked about six months ago. Has that been established?
Actually, I went out in the community where we are. I did speak with a resident who's soliciting the neighbors to come up with an advisory board. I spoke with her today, and they were kind of little, had a little feedback, kept pushed back because they didn't understand. So my next step is to have a meeting with them, to let them know what the advisory board consists of, to make them feel a little bit more comfortable, because there have been a lot of changes in the department, and we're trying to, you know, build up the confidence of the residents in reference to the department.
And I appreciate that. I just know that back four, four months ago, there was discussion about folks that were trying to challenge their rent when it got recalculated, and there needed to be a process. And I, and I would not harp on it, but it's just been something that's continued to be pushed off and pushed off, and I thought that we had to have one. I guess that's the reason.
Yeah, but we, right now, we don't have any resident that I know of, and you can correct me, that is questioning their rent. There's none that have been brought to my attention about rent, them disputing their rent. And I'm in the office five days a week.
Is this advisory board comprised of all residents within public housing or?
The resident advisory board will be comprised of residents. Now, if you're talking about the hearing panel, which is a different panel, that will be, of course, you would have a resident on there, and typically, you would want to get a director, maybe, that will come in from another public housing that know public housing, and does not have any connection to the actual tenant that's in the community. Like, I couldn't be on the hearing panel because the conflict.
I believe the hearing panel is what Councilmember Hall was.
Okay. Okay.
And I guess I go back to December, but one of your staff members actually asked me to be on one and actually scheduled a meeting, and before I went to it, I said to Todd, what's going on here? So it was almost like somebody within the agency didn't know what was going on, and they were trying to get one started, wanted me to be there with a time and date. And I just don't like it whenever we've got folks that are, don't know what one hand is doing. So that's the reason I am staying on it.
Yeah, and I do understand that, and that is one of the things that we are, what me as the director is working diligently on in the department, because there is, the culture has to be changed in the department. I am there five days a week. I do go by policies and procedures. I foster an environment of communication, and sometimes it may not be welcomed, because, you know, when you have someone in leadership that's going to go strictly by the policy. So we're getting there. We are. As far as the hearing panel, once I get the advisory board in place, because I would want a resident, you know, that's supporting the community to be on that board. Again, I did speak with her today. She had a list of about 20 names, where she walked around and she spoke with her neighbors in reference to the resident advisory board. I asked her to call them and give me two dates that I can have a sit-down meeting with them, so that we can form the resident advisory board.
And I believe that's one reason why we're not hearing so much as we did in the past, because of, as she just indicated, that she's in the office five days a week. It's been a pretty good while since we had some consistency in the office on a regular basis, somebody that can answer the concerns of the residents. So I think that's definitely a step in the right direction.
Yes, and I am in the community. I walk the community. I pick up trash cans. I talk to the neighbors. So I'm very interactive with the community, so they know that I'm there. I just have to continue to work with the team to make sure that things are filtered, you know, to the back, knowing what needs to come to the director, you know? And you can speak with Darren. I'm very open. I'm very transparent. Anything that happens in public housing, before you all, the city manager get it, I give it to Darren, whether it's a need to know or just in case. I make sure that Darren is aware of anything that could come to City Hall.
Very good. And my last follow-up then would be, based on your report from this month, your department, we still have three key your department, we still have three key positions open?
Yes.
Three. A facilities maintenance tech, a resident services coordinator, and a capital fund specialist procurement.
That's correct.
Are we in the process of hiring or... Because these have been open for a while, haven't they?
Well, not the maintenance facility. We just promoted within, so that will maybe a month. But our selection is with Dana in HR. So it's just a matter of us getting their facilities maintenance on the schedule for interviewing. The resident services and procurement, prior to becoming, they kind of had the two positions together. They're totally different roles and responsibilities. They shouldn't be together, so we've decided to separate them. So it's just a matter of HR updating the job descriptions for both of those. That's... Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Y'all have a great day.
Just one thing. Thank you for what you're doing for the first time in a long time. I feel comfortable about what's going on, the communication that's coming back to us, because heretofore, it's just been like... Do you want to catch the wave and go in, or do you want to drag? So thank you very much for what you're doing.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Y'all have a great day.
And the last thing, Mayor. House Bill 24 is to restore the downzoning authority. This was something that was filed January 30th, and that's the whole downzoning that is uproar in North Carolina. At a COG meeting last week in Charlotte, I have copies of two resolutions in support of it, of restoring the authority for local governments to do what we want to do. One of these is from Apex, the city of Apex did, and one of them is from Maggie Valley. And I'm going to give these to you, Todd, so if it's something that we, as a council, decide we want to do, it is a resolution that goes to the General Assembly in support of allowing us to be able to have some local authority there.
Anything further come for council? I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 5 and 6, consult with attorney and personnel. So moved. Have a motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.